Only mode.
And on here. Okay, hopefully everyone can hear me now. Let me turn this on. Okay, so does that look everything okay Paul? We good? Okay. All right, so just for everybody who is in attendance either here or online. We are just doing an official unofficial part of the meeting to go over our two proclamations. Typically, our proclamations are done over the first meeting of the month. And for some reason, we've had three in a row. So I think that that glitch in the system is fixed and we can rest assured that our next meeting hopefully will not have proclamation. We're just becoming the the council of awards, I think, just to give proclamations like kids get awards for showing up. So with that, we're going to go ahead and start. I'm going to do the I'm going to switch them around because we have a group of people here for the Black History Month and since I'm assuming they may want to get up and speak or something. So we'll let them go second. I'll do the first one as a proclamation declaring that henceforth March as Women's History Month. Would someone like to read this? Sure, go ahead.
Proclamation to declaring that henceforth the month of March will be recognized as Women's History Month. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economical, economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. Whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. Where its American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado does hereby proclaim March to be the Women's History Month. Done today, the ninth of February 2021. I know we can't make a motion because we're not in a meeting, so please take that as an adoption.
As our proclamation, okay, and I have signed that away. And we can move on. Thank you for that, as we know how important that is for everything we do. Having women in our lives. So next one, let me go back. It's a proclamation declaring that henceforth the month of February will be recognized as Black History Month. And as I see, I think Ms. Duncan has some guests here. Would you like to read that into the sure, the record? Okay.
A proclamation declaring that henceforth the month of March will be recognized. I'm sorry, wrong one. A proclamation declaring that henceforth the month of February will be recognized as Black History Month. Whereas the month of February since 1976 has been designated as a tribute to the thousands of years of black innovation and struggle. And whereas in honoring African Americans from our ancestors to now, we celebrate determination, hard work, intelligence, and perseverance in the enhancement of all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, the community, and the arts. And whereas we play tribute to the heroes sung and unsung of African American history, we recall the inner strength that sustained million millions in bondage. And whereas researching African American history brings belated awareness of the many who helped build and defend our nation. And of the many individuals who stood against prejudice and injustice that would inspire movements, legislation, and advancement set to ensure the rights we share today. And whereas increasing our awareness of Black History, we hope to better equip to handle future challenges and opportunities. And whereas by the City of Fountain's continued recognition of Black History Month, we hope to firmly demonstrate the respect and value we have for our residents of African heritage. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the mayor and the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado hereby proclaims the month of February as Black History Month and encourage all citizens to honor Black American history and culture. Done on this ninth day of February 2021.
Okay, thank you for that. And I we have some guests here. Are we going to have some folks come up?
Sure, we have if Ms. Jennifer would come up, Jennifer Smith. And tell us a little bit about herself and the organization.
There's a button on the bottom. Let's agree.
That better. Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Deidre, for having us. Actually, we've been doing this for eight years. This is our multicultural eighth annual Black History Program. We've been doing it at the Stargazers for the past three years, Gold Room, four years, and we've done it at the library. 21C when it first opened. So this is a great opportunity for the kids to do I am speeches as well as poetry, songs, dance, different interactments of Black History in a way that they're actually comfortable and they're actually excited about. So we've been doing this and we got the opportunity to bring two. We have Malcolm X and Chadwick here today just to show you guys a little sneak peek of what you're going to see on the 28th of this month. At Stargazers, we will be in person. We were worried about that, but they have opened up to be half capacity. So people are welcome to come with tickets only, but it's also live stream. So you can actually watch it from the website on your phone or even at Story Church, which is right there off of Airport and Circle. They're opening up their building too, to let you watch it live stream there. So great opportunity and if we're blessed to be able to do it during COVID.
So, okay.
We're gonna go ahead and bring Malcolm X up first. He's gonna do his speech. I'm gonna bring the microphone down for him.
Okay, go ahead.
Who taught? Who taught you? Please. Who taught you to hate the texture of your hair? Who taught you to hate the color of your skin to such extent that you bleach to get like the white man? Who taught you to hate the shape of your nose and the shape of your lips? Who taught you to hate yourself from the top of your head to the soles of your feet? Who taught you to hate the your own kind? Who taught you to hate the race that you belong to so much that you don't want to be around each other? No, before you come asking Mr. Muhammad, does he teach hate? You should ask yourself, who taught you to hate being what God made you? We teach you to love the hair that God gave you. The most disrespected person in America is the black woman. The most unprotected person in America is the black woman. The most neglected person in America is the black woman. I am Malcolm X. There is a new world order in the making and it is our time to take a rightful place in it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bozeman?
Make him comfortable. My name is Chadwick Bozeman. I was born on November 29th, 1976 in South Carolina. I attended Howe University, graduating with a bachelor's final in directing. Attending in HBCU was an amazing experience, especially because Felicia Shaw was my acting instructor and mentor. During my continuation at Howard, I was amongst a group of talented students that are accepted into the University of Oxford prestigious summer program. Felicia pushed hard for us to attend, even though none of us had the money needed for tuition. She was remarkably resourceful, convincing a few of her celebrity friends to pray for us all to go. Years later, I found out that the great dancer of Washington was the one who sponsored me. Because of him and Felicia, I was blessed with the opportunity to become a better version of myself. And additionally, I attended the British American Drama Academy in London. I started working at us as I started doing a number of stage productions, working as working as a part of Hip Hop Theater Festival and writing plays. I did a number of productions. Landing is on TV shows like London Heights. After starring as African American icons Jackie Robinson in the movie 42 and James Rannan get on up, my career began to take off. I was an artist for the sake of activism, playing the role of Justice Largely Marshall. In 2018, I played the role of D'Challa in blockbuster movie Black Panther. Not only did the film off of Shout! Box Records and earned an Academy Award nomination for Best Picture. Being able to witness the enthusiasm and joy of my role in Black Panther impacted minds of so many was my most prized achievement. In 2016, I was diagnosed with stage three colon cancer. I know you're probably wondering if I had it during the filming of Black Panther. The answer is yes. I kept my diagnosis a secret because I'm a very private person. My mom taught me not to have people fuss over me and in this business, people tripped about things. And I was in so much pain while shooting my last role, Ma Rainey's Black Bottom, co-starring Viola Davis. But I didn't let that hinder me. I was not gonna let this stop me in the prime of my life and doing what I loved. After a four-year battle, I passed away on August 20th, 2020. I'd like to leave you with the message, especially the men and black men in particular. Take care of your health and get tested. Oftentimes, people pass away from colon cancer because they're too afraid, too uncomfortable, or miseducated about that test, the testing process. That one test could save your life. I'm Chadwick Bozeman. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
Just wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity and we're One Body ENT is our organization. If you guys want flyers, we do have signage that you can pass out in the community and we're actually on Facebook as well if you want to share the event. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks for coming out and sharing that with us and and being a part of tonight. So are we good?
So hopefully we'll get them here in Fountain.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And we've got some champions for you here as well. So thank you for sharing your evening with us. Okay. Okay, and so for everybody else online, we are going to move to about 13 minutes of quiet time. And six o'clock will be the start of our official meeting. So we will be back. At about less than a minute. Hi, Ms. Martinez. I like how she did just like whatever.
There was a smile.
Oh, I'm sure. Smile and then the glare at Todd. Yeah. Real quick, do we have any public comment from online? No, okay. All right, we are you ready over there? Okay, are you ready? Okay. Let me start my camera. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our city council meeting for the first second Tuesday, the first meeting of February. It is February 9th, 2021, 6:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance. By the United States of America.
The United States of America.
Which stands indivisible, indivisible. Justice. Justice.
All right, thank you. And roll call, please, Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Tega.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All seven members present.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to go ahead and get moving forward then. We are on to item number four, A and B. We have presentations, board commission committee appointments, and I see none tonight. I wonder, do I need to go through that? Let me go ahead and have you go ahead and do the particulars around how to for the people online, how to ask questions and things.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to the city council meeting. If you are attending virtually tonight, you will see a four buttons. And those four buttons are what you will use to move throughout the webinar. If you click the orange button, it will open up the user interface for you. Your microphone will be muted during the council meeting. There are two ways to communicate with city council. First, you may raise your hand by clicking on the hand button on your vertical menu bar. Second, you can type a question into the question pane in the attendee interface. If you are not connected to the web presentation, you will not be able to raise your hand or ask a question. To raise your hand, click on the hand button on your vertical attendee menu bar. When your hand is raised, the arrow will turn from green to red. A staff member will then call on you by name, register with you, and will unmute you. If you want to ask a question in the attendee pane, please type a question to city council or staff members. Staff will question, will read your question out loud and direct to the appropriate party. The question pane is not visible until you click the orange arrow to open up the attendee pattern. Pain.
Okay, thank you for that. And yeah, there's a couple of names there that I haven't seen before, so I wanted to make sure they had the opportunity to know how to participate if they need to. We're going to move on to item number five, city council agenda requests and announcements. I'll start with Ms. Duncan.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I don't have much. I just saw that the Pike's Peak United Way, they have a program called VITA Volunteer Income Tax Assistance. You can go there and get your taxes done for free. Of course, you have to be under a certain income bracket, so please check with them if you would like, if you're in need of assistance of getting your income tax done. I was glad to see that Sunnyside Market in conjunction with Karen Share has located here at the Walt Fortman Center on 501 East Iowa for fresh fruits and vegetables. It's a big plus for our city and I It's a big plus for our city, and I am so happy and to see them there, and they do have volunteer opportunities available.
Okay, thank you. I was going to mention that, too, and I got, I got an email through the school district about that, so they're getting the word out. All right, Mr. Geek, anything?
Yes, I met with Todd and some people from the county health department last week. Last Thursday, we went, we walked through through the new building and the facility. They kind of gave us a heads up on what's happening and who's there. Currently, the WIC people are on emergency. Am I correct on that? Limited. They're, they've figured the end of May before everything gets working. But it was quite impressive. They've really done a lot of work. They're, as soon, as soon as they get finished, they'll be ready to go.
All right, Mr. Applegate.
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, Ms. Estes.
I don't have anything this evening.
I don't have anything this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lauer.
He had a chance last week, arranged by John Trilch, had a chance to go, go up to the County Emergency Operations Center for the press conference where the county was announcing the five-star restaurant and business program launched for the county. Because of the way it was arranged, I didn't get the opportunity to make any comments. Frankly, that was okay because they had five people making a lot of comments and then a pretty robust question and answer period where I got to see firsthand how the local media attempts to insert and then promote an agenda into something that has nothing to do with that agenda. That was an education all by itself and well worth the trip. Both before and after the press conference, had an opportunity to speak with Commissioner VanderWurf for almost an hour and a half each. He's very, very excited about Fountain coming along to partner on a regional basis and has promised that he will be more forceful in making sure people recognize us as a region, as a regional partner moving forward. And he's really looking forward to continued and expanded cooperation with us on a number of different initiatives as we go. So all in all, ended up being a very productive, very productive time up there.
All right, great, thanks for doing that, and I, he, he worked with us years ago on trying to get the old Apple SCI building filled and with some technology and stuff. But he's always been a huge advocate for Fountain, brought the bike race here and some of those things, and so, and he's could, he could have taken it anywhere, he thought of Fountain first, so I trust that he'll do that, and thank you for, for being there. Ms. Thompson.
Yeah. Goodness, so I attended a CML sponsored conference with the Census Bureau, and I thought it was going to be something talking about the remote recent census they had done. It was absolutely fascinating hour to learn about all the different information that is available through the Census Bureau and some of the stuff they do every year, every some, every three years, five years. So they are active all the time, and the guy summed it up really good at the end of the meeting. He said, we just got a lot of data. So if you're, if you're a business owner and you're looking for data on COVID-19 recovery, different things in your area, there's probably a tab, if you dig around in there deep enough, you can find just about anything if you're trying to open a business or expand your business for information that you might need, so. It's pretty fascinating, and the guy had a really dry sense of humor, so he actually made it interesting. And then I appreciate Chief Maxim taking a couple hours with me this week and touring through things, seeing some of the really great upgrades they've made, and didn't offer to let me squirt a fire hose, but it was a little cold that day. So go back in the summer when it's hot, right? Yeah, but anyways, that was, that was a lot of fun and getting to go through all the different ones and seeing the improvements they're doing and and some great fantastic things going on, so love to see the promoting from, from within, within our department going on, so. Appreciate his time.
Okay, and I don't think I have anything, I've just been busy, everyone's trying to make it through at least the first few months, and the vaccine rollout's been moving, I actually got mine today, and so got in on the teacher round, and so we're gonna keep, there was a lot of people there at the, at the Safeway, and there's a big event going on at Centura Health this weekend. And so the only suggestion I've heard, if you're still trying to get, if you're in the one of those groups, the age groups, or if you're a teacher, and there's some other personnel that you just got to get on as many lists as you can, and eventually you'll get a call from somebody, hopefully, and, but I know my parents, my mom was daily checking schedules and checking things, and, and they both got their shot. They had to go to two different places, but at least they both got them, and it just took a little bit of work in doing that. If you need help, please reach out in, in, I know for some, the internet and that sort of thing is just a little bit difficult, you know, we can definitely figure out ways to connect you with the right people, I'm sorry, with the right people or whatever to help you navigate that and, and just do that, or just call, call your doctor's office, call some of those places as well, and just get on that list if, if you're interested in getting the shot, so. Sounds like they're moving forward, another one maybe popping up as well, so we'll have three soon, so we'll see how that goes. I have nothing else with that, so we're going to move to public to be heard. Did you have anything?
You already went down there.
That's okay. Did you have anything?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought you had your hand up. Public to be heard, citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Email your concerns to the city clerk prior to the meeting at councilmeetings@fountaincolorado.org. We may not be able to provide immediate answer, but we'll direct staff to follow up. And out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments at three minutes or less. I don't think we had anybody online who sent in any questions, we have anything here? Okay, see none, we will go ahead and move on to item number seven, our consent agenda. All items listed under consent are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members is in requests, which case item may be removed and considered separately a discretion of council. We have items A and B.
I do have something to say.
Okay, go ahead.
I was concerned about the 268,000, I thought we were at 250 for a maximum, but it seems we're at 275, and even at that, I was a little concerned that maybe the public doesn't understand that much money without them hearing anything about it or anything, so maybe we want to readdress that one of these days.
The, the amount?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to discuss this one, or are you good?
No, I've talked to Scott.
Okay.
Playing this one, so.
Okay, and that's a council policy, it's, so if anytime council wants to relook at that number, and so what Mr. Applegate's referring to, we kind of have items that we just put on consent up to, what did you said, 260?
Seventy-five.
Or 275,000, and so it'll just be approved with a consent agenda. It's always the option for council to pull it off or have someone in the public to ask to pull it off if, if we want to, and then you can get a quick presentation and have some questions answered that way. But if council ever wants to lower that number, make that number bigger, we can do that, it's just kind of a, it's, it's not anything set in stone, it's just kind of a council directive and, and it's a little confusing sometimes, too, though, but anytime that you, you feel like you want to discuss something on the numbers and just get questions answered, feel free to pull it, so with that, thank you for bringing that up, anything else or any, how we want to go forward with our consent agenda?
I have to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion for approval, and Mr. Geek, I'm sorry, I wasn't even looking at the lights.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. I think we're going to have, still have to do the call because Ms. Estes is not online.
Right. Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you, we'll move right on to item number eight, eight A, second reading of ordinance number 1758, and ordinance establishing a backflow prevention program by amending section 290, customer obligations of chapter 1, 3.04 of the Title 13 Utilities Code of the Fountain Municipal Code. It says Mr. Blankenship, is he online?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here. Mayor, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is a second, this is a second reading of ordinance. I'm going to turn my, I'm going to turn my back, back here. Okay, this is second reading of an, this is second reading of an ordinance that, that, to, 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 prevention and cross-control. Actually, we have a program, this is to formalize our ability to enforce that program. In the past, we have enforced or administered the program under the auspices of the state. The state has pushed that down to the, to the local level, and so what this essentially, the, the only real change in the program is that if we do have someone who violates this code, then we would have the ability to, if we worked with them and they, and they refused to comply, we would have the ability to turn their water off. And this is, this, this whole program is just to protect our drinking water system from any cross-connections or any, any type of anything being suctioned back into our drinking water system from someone's own private service. We'd be happy to answer questions, Justin Moore here this evening with me, and he'd be happy to answer questions about the program if there are any.
Okay, all right, so I am and see no questions at this moment. Okay, it is second reading, so what would council like to do? Mayor Protim?
Move to approve ordinance 1758 on second reading.
Okay, and Mr. Applegate? Okay, we have a motion and second for approval, Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, we're on to item nine, new business, nine A. Nothing was removed from the agenda tonight. Nine B, I'm opening a public hearing, a resolution 21-005, a resolution adopting the City of Fountain three-mile plan for 2021, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, good evening, Kristi Martinez, City of Fountain Planning Department. The item before you is a statutory requirement for the City of Fountain to adopt a three-mile plan within their comprehensive development plan and their annexation plan. Next slide. State statute 3112105 requires all municipalities to have a three-mile plan in place prior to any annexations commencing within that given year, and this plan must be updated annually. Next slide. The annexation plan, or the three-mile plan for 2021 has been updated to reflect annexations that took place in 2020. The public hearing for this item was published within the El Paso County Advertiser and News in January, on January 13th, 2021. Next slide. The first figure that's being updated is figure one of the comprehensive development plan. The blue boundary line that surrounds the city limits depicts the three-mile boundaries that extend from the existing city limits outwards. In any given year, a city cannot grow more than three miles in any given direction. Next slide. The second figure that's being updated is figure one of the City of Fountain annexation plan with the same thing. The blue line depicts the boundary of the three miles within the city. Next slide. Staff had, so the city had previously adopted a comprehensive development plan that is compliant with the revised state statute 3123201. The three-mile plan depicted in both of those figures also complies with the requirements of the state statute. Tonight's meeting, staff would recommend approval of resolution 21-005, which would comply with the statutory requirements of adopting a three-mile plan for 2021. This item was presented before the City of Fountain Planning Commission at their February meeting, at which time they did make a recommendation of approval, and again, tonight's staff would make a recommendation of approval of resolution 21-005. Are there any questions for staff?
All right, let me look at questions, Mr. Applegate, go ahead.
Yeah, I have two, on the second visual slide, what's that gray?
Could you go to that slide?
Doesn't, it isn't in the legends, some of it. Not that one, the other one.
The next one.
That's some of the imagery that just appears in the map. The area that's shaded in that tan color is the existing city limits.
I see that in the legend, but the gray isn't in the legend, what is that?
It, it's some imagery that didn't appear through it. What it looks like is some of the annexations that may have taken place, this annexation document is from 2006, but we have to update the blue line every year.
Okay, and the second question, on the urban growth boundary, how is that established?
That's based on where we anticipate future growth occurring in the future for the city, and then the green line is also the urban services area where the city could reasonably provide urban level, urban level services to those boundaries, so whether that's municipal water and sewer or electrical.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Does this affect at all the urbanized area that the, the plant, the transportation plans follow?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does a public hearing, if any public have any questions on this? And this has been before us a couple of times.
Every year.
Yeah, okay. All right, I see no other questions from public or council, so I'm going to close the meeting, or public meeting, and, public hearing, sorry, and if council would like to move forward with this item? Hey, Mr. Applegate?
I move to approve resolution 20-005.
And Mr. Geek?
Twenty-one, zero, zero, five, right?
Twenty-one, dash, zero, zero, five.
I'm sorry.
He said twenty.
Second, I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval, Ms. Huffman, with the call, please.
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, item nine C, let me turn my camera back on. Item nine C, first reading of ordinance number 1759, and ordinance amending chapter 17.31, section 17.710, meanings defined, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Kristi Martinez, again, City of Fountain Planning Department. The item before you tonight, next slide, is to incorporate a definition for carports. In title 17, with the carport section, including the definition, was previously approved with ordinance 1730 in June of 2019. In 2020, when we did update, the comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance, this definition did not make it into it. It was an administrative error when we were working with the consultant, and that error was just recently caught, so it's being requested tonight that the following definition be included. Wood, metal, or composite, and covered with standard roofing or membrane materials such as plastic, fabric, or composite materials. A carport is an accessory structure to one and two family dwelling units, and it may be freestanding or attached to another structure. A carport must be entirely open on two or more sides except for structural supports, and a carport may not, carports not open on at least two sides shall be considered a private garage and shall comply with the provisions relating to a private garage outlined elsewhere within title 17.
Okay.
That's the only change to title 17 is adding the definition. That fell through the cracks.
Say that again, really loud, and yeah, because we, we went through a slew of phone calls from people and, and and I don't, I don't want to go through that again, so just changing some wording there and fixing it, again, just an oversight, nothing is changing other than what that looks like, so any questions from council on this one? Okay, Mr. Rick, go ahead.
Question, just a quick question on the it says maybe freestanding or attached to other structures. I thought we said that it had to be attached physically to the ground or the, the concrete or which it was sitting. Is freestanding, is that okay? Does that say? Does that say we, I can just stick it there and if the wind blows it, it can blow it away? I'm just asking the question for clarification, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And the freestanding means it's not attached to any other structure. That does not mean it's not properly anchored into the ground.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I see no other questions at this point. And let me check with Ms. Estes, make sure her light's not on. Okay, so we have an item for first reading. What would council like to do? Mr. Geek?
I make the motion to approve ordinance seventeen, fifty-nine on first reading.
Okay, and Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, item nine D. Resolution number two, one dash zero, zero, six, a resolution establishing a value for amenities in Lou as applied by section one, seven point zero, four point one, seven, zero of the Fountain Municipal Code. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Christy Martinez, again, City of Fountain Planning Department. The item before you is to establish a land value associated with amenities in Lou. Within the subdivision title seven, or zoning ordinance title seventeen, all PUD zoned properties are required to provide a minimum of twenty-five percent open space for residential and fifteen percent for non-residential uses. In order to incentivize the construction of amenities within the land area that is provided, the code does allow for some amenities in Lou such as enhancements of pools, playgrounds, and golf courses to count towards that minimum open space requirements. But on some smaller PUDs where those type of amenities may not be feasible in working with the Parks Department and the city attorney, it was determined that we needed to establish a land value for amenities to be included. So whether that's additional playground equipment, pavilions, barbecue pits, things like that for other amenities within the open space that they are providing. We wanted to associate a land value associated with those amenities to offset the amount of land being provided versus the amenities being provided. That value was based on market research throughout the Pikes Peak Region, which was determined to be approximately two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars per acre.
Okay, and so I guess my question would be, do we, is this something that needs to be relooked at every year to adjust that with prices? Or how do we, what, what's a determination there?
We do have some inflation language written into it. It can be periodically reviewed based on those inflation rates and the rates that are going within the region. If it needs to be adjusted, we do have that ability to do so.
Okay, is that something that needs to come to council every time, or you guys can just automatically do that?
I believe it's written in that it needs to come to council because it's being established by a resolution.
All right. That's good for me. Anybody else have any questions on this? And I think really the intent is, you know, we, sometimes we, well, not sometimes, we have our open space requirements and oftentimes only was open space and nothing to do with it. And we may be able to use as a park, but then we have to then figure out ways to fund and put stuff in the park, which we often can't do. And so if we can work some, some ways here to allow them to, in lieu of all that open space that they're required, they can pay for some of this equipment right off the bat and help us with that. So that's a good thing. And I think they're appreciative of it as well in moving forward. And it, it allows them the opportunity to have some more space to build on too. So. But it does hit some, kills two birds with one stone for us. So. Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I love in the description where we're, we're having a gold course.
Yes, it should be golf course, not a gold course.
I wanted the gold course. Okay, all right, that we're going to get to go panning or something, go panning. Okay, anyways, who sets the value on the equipment being done? Not that anybody would do this, but you know, I don't want somebody saying it's a seventy-five thousand dollar swing set when it's two little wooden swings on a crossbar.
So the developer would provide that cost estimate to staff and staff has an index that we can utilize based on playground equipment and other things that the city has purchased and other communities have purchased as a index to utilize as a baseline for those improvements.
Okay, any other questions from anybody? Okay, see none. What would council like to do with this item? Ms. Estes, did you have a question or?
No, I would like to move to approve resolution number twenty-one dash zero, zero, six.
Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Applegate?
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez, for all of your help tonight with everything. All right, item number ten, correspondence, comments, and ex officia reports. I'm going to start with Mr. Trainer. How are you today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Just as we, as I, I just have a few updates I wanted to provide to the council real quick. The first one is just letting you know as we shift back to a hybrid model for our council meetings, we're limited on our capacity in our room here. So you'll find that a lot of our staff who are participating in the meeting will be doing it remotely. So we have several staff in the building right now who are just operating out of their offices. So I just want to let the council know that if questions come up, we have folks that will still be able to.
Scott on that, is it possible that they could come in just for their presentation?
They certainly could, yeah.
Okay, I, I think that would be nice to have them just come in and do their presentation and they can
Sure.
hike back out and.
Yeah, we're just trying to be really cognizant of our capacity limitations. So yeah, yeah, that wouldn't be a problem at all.
Okay.
Okay, then secondly, I want to let everyone know that we're still moving forward with the five star program update. The really interesting thing that is now that El Paso County has moved back to yellow, theoretically, someone, one of the businesses who got approved for a five star certificate would be able to operate at a blue level. However, the rules changed for that as well on Saturday. And so are any businesses applying for that aren't going to be able to actually operate at a blue level until a certain percent of those in the county that are over seventy have received their vaccination. So ends up being a little bit of a moving target. It's a little bit of a frustration, as we all know, for multiple reasons. But just wanted to share that. That's still moving forward, though. Associated with that also, and let everyone know that PPACG had some additional funds that they're really struggling to get, they really want to work hard to get them out to businesses. And so we've been providing that information to our chambers so they can get it out. We're providing it to our businesses, that information that they can use to help them with their COVID issues. That, those dollars are also funds that could be used to help them meet their five star application requirements, because there are some costs associated with the various requirements that business has to go through to get their five star certification. So we're trying to get that information out as much as possible and trying to help PPACG with that. IGZAS, I want to let you know that there is a conversation going on with PPACG really at a really high level, really kind of a conceptual level right now on, on trying to do something at a regional level to help out the various installations around the area. And so that's something that Andy getting with, with PPACG is starting to have some conversations with folks on. We've really been at the table. He's asked us, invited us, and John has been right there with Andy, helping them understand how that works, helping them understand the impacts, the difficulties, the challenges. But also, you know, how it could, how it could benefit. So that's something that, that John Trilch has been really doing a good job assisting them with. And we're going to stay right there with them because they may, they may be able to do some things. For example, with some of the Air Force facilities that would be further down in our time, timeframe. But I wanted to share that briefly. We have our, I, I'm calling it for lack of a real term, our legis, our council legislative subcommittee, but it's councilmember Duncan, councilmember Thompson, myself, and, and the city attorney Troy Johnson that are trying to stay up on legislative issues. And we haven't had any, obviously, at this point that we really had to discuss. But we're trying to create something that we haven't in the past, and that's a legislative policy agenda so that we can kind of start thinking about some of the issues that we know will probably be coming up, whether it's transportation related, public safety, whatever. We're trying to create sort of a policy document. We're, we're in the developmental stages of that right now. We've never had anything like that. We're looking at what other communities have done, and some have done some pretty good stuff. So we will be continuing to refine that and bringing that back to council in the near future to review. The last thing I wanted to mention here is that we also, Mount Carmel is looking for a space down here for once a week to, to have some office space to, so they can serve veterans down here. So that's something they're trying to expand. Todd, with some of his work with the, the Public Health Department, the Beck Center, there may be an opportunity there for them to utilize one of those office spaces back there. And so the other thing that, let's give you a quick update, because Todd's working on this as well, is on the community room out there, just because they sort of relate in the same area. That's something that I think Todd indicated that March, the hope is that we have that community room up there able to be used for the public in March. Capacity is about two hundred. There, there are some things we have to work through as far as how it gets reserved and how, how can we coordinate with that, that with the county so they're aware of what we're doing, et cetera. But those, just want to give those quick updates to the council.
All right, thanks. Chief Heber?
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to thank you all for, two, two weeks ago, we recognized Police Officer Week. You all were very gracious and some very supportive comments, you know, it's, I tried to spread those comments. I want you all to know that to the police officers and firefighters and those young men and women are down in the trenches protecting us every night. You know, it, it amazes me that we've either recruited great talent from other states. I think Commander Lewis from Detroit, I think of the Fire Chief from New Mexico and others. And then we, we've grown great talent with three battalion chiefs, as an example, twenty year veterans. Spent their whole career here. So I think we're on the right track to have a good culture. I also would just tell you all that it's way in combat, when I tell people about the secret sauce really has to do with being in a great community, project community, having great city council support, right? Without your support, we wouldn't be where we're at. Having a great city staff. That is also, Scott's done a great job of bringing in a lot of talent across the city staff. And so the synergy works very well for our city. So I just, you know, I'm very proud of that. I wanted to tell you all, thank you on behalf of the men and women and know that I passed on your, your very kind comments to those people that work really hard to do that. Next city council meeting, speaking of good news and your support, last year, we, we discussed, I always know money's so tight, it's difficult, but we discussed a beacon team, right? Pairing out, pairing up a very seasoned, capable, mature police officer with a provider and really having that asset forward deployed throughout our city, right? It's going to help take home fire department and police department. These are the calls, whether it's an endangered kid, mental health person in crisis. I just reviewed a videotape of a former veteran that, that this was tailor made or the beacon team was tailor made for this call. He was definitely somewhere between a manic and alcoholic meltdown, walking down the middle of eighty-five, eighty-seven. And the police officers had chased him for hours across the city trying to get him to calm down. We eventually had that situation best we could, but that is a situation where a beacon team and the asset, resources they, they will bring to that will be very, very valuable. And the follow-up visits and mental health treatment for citizens to get. So Todd, we worked very hard to find space down at the Beckett Food Center. So that will be where the beacon team is going to be stationed at. And they're very happy. Todd's made that, really made that link up from the idea when it started. And we've had an office down there, that would be where the beacon team is housed out of. And public health, I think Todd related is also very excited. There'll be good synergy in that building between, you know, the, the people of the county and our team down there in the city. So everyone's really excited. Scott and Troy, we've signed all the contracts and documents. We're just waiting. You'll get a brief on that from Lieutenant Reynolds, who's been the action officer on that. The Sergeant Ken Owens, another twenty year guy for Peter Forefond Police Department, the beer sergeant. They're going to give you a short ten minute brief. I don't even know if we'll do PowerPoint or not, but really that's just your chance to hear from them and from them to tell you some of the concepts and, and share some stats with you of how effective it will be. I'll give periodic updates on that because I think it's a very important resource to our community. You know, the COVID vaccine in, in both fire departments and police department is starting to happen. We initially have not had large numbers of our first responders that wanted to get that vaccine initially. Hopefully that will change, but the people that did volunteer to get it, those processes on both sides are starting to open. And we're seeing those volunteers get, be in the process of getting vaccinated, right? To, you know, protect themselves and our community and our members. And now hopefully everyone gets to, you know, vote and choose. But hopefully I think this time proves the test of time. Hopefully we encourage more people in the public safety department to do that just because they're out there so much. The frequency of calls that we run on COVID from the fire team continues to be very, very low. And today, right now, I just am most proud and happy hopeful to say that, you know, no one in the public safety department has been exposed, is on quarantine or not present with the community. So knock on wood, we'll continue to do that. That's a little longer update, but just haven't got a chance to update you as much. I'm going to give you a couple of those things and just take.
All right, looking forward to Lieutenant Reynolds coming and telling us about that program. I'm excited about it. I think it's going to be good for our community. Todd?
Sure, just a couple of quick additions, just to give everybody some history. Chief Heber was actually one of our unofficial first beacon units out at Fort Carson. And how many, many, many times when we would have issues with soldiers, soldiers out here in the city and they were dealing with mental health, they knew their world much better than we did. So I would call Chris and he came out on some, some pretty high risk ones as well and helped us take care of some of those beacon type issues. So I actually helped a friend, what was that Scott, a month ago? Probably with the sheriff's office beacon unit. And I can tell you, it's an invaluable resource for both our, not only our first responders, but for the, just the general public, putting that partnership together and actually going out and having those folks speak a language that our first responders don't have time to get trained in. It's, it saves people's lives. So it's, it's a great program. But he was our first unofficial out at, out at Fort Carson. And I utilized it because it was free many times. The second thing I want to add on Scott's topic at the community room, Rose is going to be putting together a brochure. So it'll be a trifold brochure that's going to explain to everybody in the general public about that room, how they can go about the process of reserving that room and how to use that. So once she does that, she does the same thing for the, the bus department. So once she gets that together, we'll put it up on the, the website and then it'll also be hard copy. So folks will actually know how to utilize that. And she'll have that done by the time we open in March. That's all I've got, Mayor.
All right, thanks. I'm going to quickly go through staff online first. Mr. Blankenship, do you have anything further tonight?
Just a couple items, just a couple items, actually. Couple items more than the chief. No, just, just two quick items. You may notice that recently we had some company in town helping us with testing of our fire hydrants. When they completed that, we discovered through some quality control work that there was some, some problems with some of the tests. And so they're back in town and we're working with them to get our hydrants retested to make sure that all the tests are, are accurate. So you may see some of that going on across the community over the next few weeks. And then also, we have broken ground on the new substation, electric substation near Link and Link and, and Mark Shuffle. And that, that'll be coming up out of the ground, Jimmy Camp Creek Substation. And our target is to have that online and operational this summer. So a couple of things that'll be going on in the community that you may notice. And that's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Trilch?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to talk about the website a little bit this evening. You probably may have noticed that our website went down for about four days, sorry, last Thursday. And this was due to a hardware failure of the web, web hosting services for, you know, the, the company that hosts our website. I'll let IT could get into those technical details. It kind of makes my head explode, but, but it was down. We did recover its backup. As of today, it looks to be okay. They restored it to its condition prior to going down. We found a couple of things on the website that we've had to just kind of go in and clean up a little bit. But it is back up for the public and, and we'll, you know, just continue to look forward to, you know, to updating that and, and keeping that a reliable source of information for everybody. That's all I have for this.
Okay, thank you. I'm wondering on that as well, if we can just have something on there? Because I know this was kind of a, a source of frustration this weekend that, you know, people just realize if the website's down and they want to register for the meeting, they can just call into the clerk's office and get registered that way. Just maybe putting a little disclaimer there, just on the website, just letting people know that in case you can't do it online, just give a quick call and they can take care of it pretty quickly. So if you guys don't mind doing that.
Sure, we can put that on there. And, and we did, you know, we used, we put it up on social media. Sure, we can put that on there. And, and we did, uh, you know, we used, we put it up on social media and, you know, we did our best, but it, uh, we, we certainly will try and educate the public that if the site goes down in the future, um, there are some other options. And just to add a note that we were not the only city that suffered. This was like a nationwide issue. Um, any city that was with Civic Live lost their website for four days as well. So misery loved companies this weekend.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks. And with that, anything from IT or is everything good? Paul?
Good evening, Mayor. Sorry, it, uh, took a second for it to unmute. Uh, nothing really beyond, uh, just, uh, a little bit of additional details on the, the website outage. It, uh, as, uh, John mentioned, it was a hardware outage. Uh, uh, our provider reached out to us and was giving us updates, but, uh, uh, it was a little frustrating. It was kind of out of our hands at that point, uh, until they, they got their hardware issues resolved, but, uh, uh, it looks like everything is back in shape now. So we're, we're looking forward to moving on.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, anything tonight?
Uh, the only thing I wanted to say for those of you that missed the five of thirty presentations, we had a really neat, uh, presentation from a couple of young men, uh, in support of, uh, Black History Month. So I would encourage you, if you missed that, to go back and take a look. Um, but also wanted to, I didn't catch the organization, so maybe, um, Dietra or Sylvia, if you've got the information, can you repeat it for the rest of us? But that's all I have.
Okay. You wanna do that?
Yes, the organization is One Body ENT. Um, this is their eighth annual multi, multicultural Black History Program. And it will be held on Sunday, February the twenty-eighth at the Stargazers. And you can go online. Uh, they have a website, uh, W W W dot one body K L C C dot org. But if you put in, uh, Black History Program, it should come up, uh, Feb, on Sunday, February, February twenty-eighth at the Stargazers. And you must have a ticket, um, to be there in person, but it will be, uh, broadcasted on Facebook.
Okay, thank you. All right. And Ms. Huffman, anything from the clerk's office?
Anything tonight?
Okay, great. I'm gonna quickly run through council. Um, Ms. Duncan, Ms. Duncan, I am, I apologize. Anything further?
Okay, I don't have anything.
Okay, uh, Mr. Geek?
I have one thing. I did listen to the, uh, Department of Labor's webinar today about the fraud, unemployment. And, uh, there's a million, they figure there's at least a million in the state of Colorado.
Wow.
So it sounds like a real mess.
Yeah, sound like it, okay. Uh, Mr. Applegate?
I got nothing else.
Uh, Ms. Estes?
Don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim?
Just a quick question for Paul, if he's still there. Are we gonna be getting any kind of a refund or a pro rate on losing four days on that website? Because it would seem to me that a commercial provider like that would have enough redundancy in place that a four-day outage is, is unthinkable.
Uh, I. See for that. Yeah, I would agree. Uh, we, we're gonna be reaching out to them and inquiring about that. Uh, um, yeah. And, and with respect to that, uh, it sounds like the issue wasn't so much, uh, redundancy issue. Was there, uh, it was multiple failures due to, uh, and without going too deep in the weeds, but there was multiple failures on their storage array, uh, throughout their entire network. So, um, it sounded like it was a, uh, an issue involving a bug that affected all of their redundant servers. So, uh, it was a very exceptional situation, but uh, I would agree. I think that's something that, uh, we're, we're going to follow up on and, and see if we can, uh, we'll see if we can get some, uh, compensation for that for the city.
And I'll dig into the contract on that, Greg, too, as well, to see what's in there.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, so, um, just one thing. Um, I noticed today there was an announcement that the library was starting to open up their community rooms and Fountain was not listed on it. So I wrote an email to the, uh, Commissioner Lahino, since they're over the library system. And I ended up he, hearing back from the, um, head librarian. His name is Dave or David. I can't think of his last name. Had a great conversation. And, um, they understand the need for the community room to be open back down here in Fountain. They know it's one of the busiest rooms and most requested. I guess the problem i- is space. That's, you know, how they're quarantining materials for seventy-two hours once you drop them off before they process them. And that's the area where they are putting the materials to be, um, put. And, because they don't really have a very big workroom in the back. It's very minimal. So they understand the need for it and, and they understand and, and he, you know, nothing chosen. You know, they just had to pick areas where basically they have libraries that have another room they can store the quarantine materials in and, and an additional community room. So, wow, I said, well, we would be more than open to a conversation of increasing the size of the library down here in Fountain and getting it a little bit bigger, because that is a very popular room, but didn't get anywhere with that. I, I got the lecture on how Braggate doesn't have a library at all, and they think they're more important because they don't have one at all. So, you know, what can I say? But anyway, so I was, I was very appreciative of the quick response from, um, Commissioner Lahino's passing it to Commissioner Williams, who passed it to him and, and called me within hours. So, uh, um, really appreciate that. And, um, they know that library is really important to us and our community and the, the need for that room. And they're gonna try to try to figure it out, but it could be, you know, a little bit more of a process than we would anticipate. So, but I really appreciate them calling back. And, um, yeah, just don't forget about the five-star money. Um, they are working, the county asks, actually, you're gonna go back to the state and ask them to exchange the, uh, expand the parameters of that. Right now it's seven thousand dollars. They're going back to the state and asking them to extend it to twenty thousand and extend. Who can, uh, ask for it more like event centers and different things. So keep an eye on that. Right now it's seven thousand dollars, but, um, that could really help some people out with some payroll and keeping some people employed, as Sam was saying, because, um, we need to get people back to work. So Governor Polis, we need, thank you for changing the color on the dial, but how about we just throw out the dial? All right.
Okay.
Um, because if y'all notice, if you've really looked at the last green, I think it is, is the last thing on the dial, you're still on the dial. Okay, still on the dial, still on the restriction. So, yeah, all right.
Okay, um, the only thing I have is thanks to the PD for really being willing and open to hearing the needs of communities. And with everything that went on last summer, and that was one of the big things that, um, not just with everything going on last summer, but it's been kind of you know, one of those things have been just welling up and, um, providing more for mental health and, and people who are in crisis. And, um, I think we have taught a lot of people that when you get out of your, the way of yourself, good things are possible. And this is one of those things, instead of arguing about it and you can't tell me how to, how to run the police, you can't tell me to do the, uh, mind your own business, that you, you took that and, and ran with it. And, okay, we'll, we'll see what we can do to make it work, um, if it's gonna, if it's gonna be viable. And I think this is a great example of that. And and again, thanks to everyone to be in, um, I think it, I'm really excited about that program and it's just a need that has always been there regardless of what crisis is going on in the country. Um, people have mental health needs and, and we need to be more um, respectable of that and help them when they need that help. And that's what we're here for. So, um, I'm really looking forward to that presentation and moving forward with that. So, um, with that, our next council meeting is February twenty-third in two weeks, and we will still be virtual. And we will, are hybrid, not virtual, but hybrid. And, uh, we will see you then. Have a good evening.